Well, it didn't say anything, so I'm assuming that it started its. At any rate, 7:01, June 3, 2025, in the municipal meeting room. I'll help start with a roll call from the far end.
Sam Bagus.
Marty Kane.
Zachary Shapiro.
Aubrey.
Tom McGinn.
Rich Canong, I'm the chair. We have on us today approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of May 20, 2025, sidewalk and meeting minutes, public comment, and then we have two items of other business. Well, we have a discussion regarding developing performance standards for Business Industrial Park, and the second item is discussions regarding LD 2003. Samantha's going to make a presentation regarding what the bill is and how it may possibly affect ordinance changes here in the town.
I'll make a motion when you approve the agenda as read.
Zack.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane, to approve the agenda as read. Any questions, any comments? Here we none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes for May 20, sidewalk.
Move to approve as written.
Zack.
Motion by Zachary Shapiro, seconded by Marty Kane, to approve the sidewalk minutes for May 20. Any discussion?
Anita abstained, who wasn't present.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So three in favor, two abstentions. And now for the meet, the meeting minutes of May 20, 2025.
Move to approve as written.
Zack.
Motion by Zach, seconded by Marty, to approve the the meeting minutes for 2025. Any discussion?
Abstention.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Three in favor, two abstentions. Since nobody is here for, to make a public comment on, we will skip right over that. We will go into other business. You have a couple of things that I found. Kenny Monk seems to have the lightest zoning regulations for industrial parks. Benefit, they probably do, but they're scattered throughout the entire ordinance. You'd have to look at all the various sections to figure out how it, how it relates to this. There's nothing specifically for business. Which is funny, because they've probably got the biggest
Yeah, a couple of them.
Business park
Yeah.
in Southern Maine. But I did give you what their description is and their generalized use. And then Saco had four separate sections. They have light, business, industrial.
So where are we?
And I think, I think that's the, the first thing that we have to look at. We had, we had had this, some discussions a while back about whether or not we want to do this. And I figured we could, we can either move forward and start working on it, or we can decide that we don't want to do it. And I think either one would be acceptable. I think if we're going to do it, I'm thinking the BI District, ARD, somebody suggested DB2. It would be those areas. I can't, I can't see putting it anywhere else.
First of all, like I said, manage where the land is available. Okay, now I'm just saying, because the industrial park has so much ledge to make anything to come in there. A small business person can't just go in there.
But that's why I think, you know, ARD would, might work. DB2 might work. I don't know, it depends upon what you're looking at, what kind of business it's going to be. DB2 could handle light manufacturing. I'm not sure about BI or anybody else.
Well, it seems like we, without having a formal area set, district set aside, there already is, seems with the machine shop and, and the timber frame company and others that are moving in, in that area. Seems like a natural fit.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I, I think one of, right now, since we don't have one, we would have to look at it and say, is that a good fit in there? And what do we do about the size of a business park? Because if you're going to have an industrial park, somebody's going to anchor it, but then there's gonna, gonna be other land that has to get set aside and so that it can become part of an industrial park. And that would involve, we'd have to be, be thinking about roadway and infrastructure would, you know, it's kind of important if you're going to have a business park.
Well, the other thing you want to consider also, we still have a train run through the town.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I mean, you may want that as availability for something. And just as a
I wondered about that, I, you know, if, if you were doing a lot of shipping, would you be able to get something from a train point of view?
Could, that would be a huge investment, but for the right company, could make sense.
And the other thing is, it's like how we ran on Coopers. Do you have to widen up road? So you can get trucks in and out for pallet jacks or anything else.
Right, we, we definitely have to, i- if you're going to do an industrial park, you have to say the road is what, what's the max here in town? 24?
What's that?
The width of a road.
Yeah, 25?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, 24, 26. But we'd have to say it has to be at least that, you know, that's the, the standard. And that's gonna, that would be the road everywhere within the business park. Because you're going to have a lot of vehicles coming and going that are going to be big sized. 18-wheelers?
And
Any, any of you see the 18?
You make something clear right off the bat. It's not going to be town maintained.
No.
Now, I mean.
Oh, no, I agree with you. It will be, it will be maintained by the industrial park itself.
Yeah, but let me see, we don't have that falling more to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but with just that section?
Just that, yeah.
Yeah, but the trucks are going on the other parts of the road that are not, right? They have to get to wherever the industrial park is. So unless it just happens to be right off Route 1 or off Limerick or something, that's a like something that we don't have to repair anyway or maintain anyway.
Yeah, we, well, we wouldn't want a convoy of 18-wheelers going down the mountain road or across on Limerick Road.
Right, but if it's a, it's, if it's in a place that that's the only access. That's what I'm saying, like, it's gotta be, if you're only, if that industrial park businesses are, are maintaining that part of the road, that part of the road has to be the only part that those trucks coming in and out are going on.
Yeah, and the other, other factor you want is to make sure that it's not affected by when the town closes the road off by weight.
Yep.
I mean, because otherwise it would close the business down or something another for how many months?
Yeah.
And, and that would create a problem in terms of location.
Yeah, I think
But I mean, I'm using that as a, when you throw it as a
Yeah, we could, we could build it into the ordinance that the, the roadway within the industrial park are not, is not subject to the weight, but what do you do about people who have to get in there?
Right, the access.
Because there's the truck, yeah, you can have a truck come in there. I, I don't know what road he's coming on.
Well, that's why I think it only makes sense, either 111 or Route 1.
Right.
Yeah, it has
Yeah, come down Limerick Road.
Then that would
Yeah, then you're gonna
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then that, that would move DB2 out of the area.
So a little confused with this, because A, we don't own any of the land, the town doesn't own it, right? And we were saying that if they come in and build it, they are responsible for it. So we're gonna go say, let's say down by the machine shop. We're gonna deem that as a business district, as an industrial park. So now, people who own land out there, if they wanted to put in a residential development, they can't.
They already can't.
Yeah, it's already blocked out.
It's in addition to
BI District can't, can't have residence.
They can have accessory residence for manager or something.
But it, it does raise a valid
Yeah, the law cabin road.
If you look at these, through these, these are, these are pure industrial parks, like the one in Saco, the one in Bitumen, all that. There are no residences in there. So I'm wondering, what are we doing to the folks that own that land now? Are we limiting them on what they can put in there or not?
We don't want to do that.
They're, they're limited
Right, that's my
by the, by the zone itself. You know, BI District, you can put almost, almost any kind of a business that you want to.
Yep.
Some of them are conditional, some of them are permitted. The, in the same
Yeah, but that's, that's just a difference of a type of business.
Yeah.
That's not a restriction on, if I own this chunk of land and I decide I want to put an apartment complex on there as opposed to I don't know, whatever, Home Depot or something like.
I'm not making any sense, I guess, I don't
But they're not limited on that anyway. They're, they don't have the availability, sorry, they don't have the availability to put a residential on the land anyway.
Right.
Right, so by putting this on there, you're not restricting them from being able to do that, it's just you're also allowed to do this as a business.
This, this all, like we just approved. Isn't that in that district?
Is it in the BI?
It could be, I, but I think we should move it, have it beyond the seasonal cottages. I, I think it'd be, it's just not, south of that, there's not enough land to, to be worth it. It'd be a lot of resistance and conflict.
What, the golf?
Behind the golf, south of, of the seasonal cottages, there is some land in there that, that's
Between that and Raptor Falls? The what? Between that and Raptor Falls? Or whatever the
No, there's almost no space there.
Yeah, yeah. There are too many accessible spots to, to get out of back there. We, we could open it up, but I think they thought, I think it could be north of seasonal cottages. Where already, it seems like it's already some industry has already been developed back in the, manufacturing.
Yeah, because you've got, well, you've got, whatever it is, it's off Enterprise Drive. And I'm not sure what's up in there.
Light manufacturing, auto, auto ships, repair, yeah.
On what enterprise?
Going, yeah, up that hill.
Yeah, a couple of garages up there, there's another building up behind, I don't know what they do there.
But it fits in with what could be industrial. It also doesn't impact any residential butters, you know?
Right.
I think we have to be cautious of that. That's why I don't think there are too many, there are too many spots in town where we wouldn't be having a conflict with residential.
But the way it's all now, they could actually go do, they could go put a small man back, right?
They could do it now.
They could do it now, right?
Yeah, they can, it just, it won't be an industrial park that would be almost exclusively from a business point of view and, and
Individual.
Well, even, even in an industrial park, it's going to be individual businesses.
Yeah.
You know, you're going to have someplace like, I can't think of the name of the
It seems to me that, that, I'm not sure. Some of you guys might know, but I, I thought Benefit owned that, that whole parcel. They put the road in and then, then bought it up for sale as an industrial park. And I thought Saco, same, same, I don't know about Kenny Buck. So a lot of times it's, it's the, the town or city will, will have a parcel that, that can be developed. This is, maybe we can encourage it to happen, but I don't know how it would happen without us, one really big player coming in, invest in 10 million in infrastructure, just to get started.
But again, you, you, we have water on Route 1. Oh, you got, but you don't have sewer.
Right.
That's the biggest thing, I mean,
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and you don't have sewer. You, you're eliminating what you could even because the industrial park has so much ledge. How can you put sewers on ledge? I mean, the one who knew the industrial park than anybody else was John, was John.
Who's John?
But he was on the planning board with us.
Oh, John, DeKendra.
DeKendra.
Yeah. Well, it, for the right, right company, the ledge could be doubled, like Home Depot. That, that was just nothing but ledge, they blasted down 30 or 40 feet
Yeah.
back. So it is a tough, a tough to build back there. But like on Enterprise Drive, that, that's, that's, they're, they're riding up above the ledge, so they're not really
No, no, not, when you get in the back, remember when we were, had a, yeah, there was that guy that
He was off, off on the right-hand side.
Yeah, there's all the legs there, but a lot of that ledge was also dumped back there. But when you land because you were overlooking the and the machinery metal place on the back of that one lot there. But, but going up through there, because that was all parkers that one time, that was all ledge going up through there.
Yeah, I think going up through there, if we, if we were to go further north on, on Route 1, we'd run into water. We'd, we'd have that, that's the issue up where the cartridge, the vape cartridge place, we're starting with. That's got a lot of water, and I don't know if, I don't know if they'll be coming back or not. But you, you, then you come across the car museum. And past the car museum, that isn't it. That might as well be a swamp back out there. So I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I know that we had discussed it, so I figured we should take a look at it. Do we want to do it or not? And we, we may say, you know, it's, it's not worth getting into at this point, because nobody, nobody would be coming around, you know?
Well, I don't mean to be a naysayer, but it seems like we have everything in place to, that would allow for the industrial park. If someone wants, wants one, they, they want to invest in it. It, it's allowed. So I don't know what we could do different than what we already have.
I don't know, that's, that's why I brought it up. I'm not sure. I'm not even sure if it's a good idea. You know, and, and talking just tonight about some of the various items that would have to be taken into consideration. That makes just, there, there would be a lot of work involved in our being able to do this.
Well, the other thing we have, like with rail tracks, if you come down, where's that land off Proctor Road? On the because you can't cross the rail tracks in itself, but it's in, I don't know what zone it's in right now, but it's a conservation conservation area where all that land from between Proctor Road or to, all the way to Law Cabin Road on that other side.
Yeah, right now it's rural conservation.
I mean, that, 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 I mean
With no, no access to it, there's no
You could have access to it.
Have a good road in.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, but that
There's no, right now, there's nothing crossing Goff's Brook. So that, that's the obstacle, just to get up to that district. It says dark green right here.
Yep.
Have to cross.
There's nothing in any of the ordinance is preventing someone from doing it, right? So the purpose of adding something is to do what? Oh.
If, if I were to look at it, I'd say the reason that we would want to have it in there
Yeah.
is so that everybody understood that, yes, you can do it, but it's restricted as to where.
So it's to hopefully encourage someone to do so if they were interested and didn't know.
And, and even, even if it were nothing more than a definition that we said is, is allowed in these two zones, ARD and the BI. And, and we just give a description of what we think a business industrial park would, would look like. At least people would know they're allowed to do it if they want.
Yeah, as opposed to, I want to build one somewhere.
Right now, they
Cardinal doesn't have anything, so I assume I can't.
But, based on, based on our ordinance, that's absolutely correct, because it says that if it's not explicitly allowed, it's prohibited.
Okay, so that's, that's, so they, they are arguably prohibited from doing it in this.
So may, maybe that's what we need to do, just add it.
Just add that language.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the easiest solution without
Yeah.
We could potentially restricting things that, yeah, you might not know or think about.
We could spend three or four months coming up with language that won't make it any better than it is now.
Yeah.
Might make it worse.
I was gonna say, it might restrict more than we intend, I think.
So I think if we add, just add that as an allowed use or conditional use maybe and
Condition.
And we just have to decide which districts.
Yep.
Or areas.
And then put the definition in the, in the, in the front and in the descriptions of what is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I thought it was kind of funny, very few places to tell you what it is.
To, to the Kenny Buck.
Kenny Buck says, the purpose of the industrial district is to provide areas near transportation arteries and municipal services that can support a range of non-polluting manufacturing and distribution and other related activities, including offices and services that are compatible with manufacturing and distribution. That's a rather vague
Yeah.
which is probably a good thing.
Yeah, it's on purpose, I'm sure.
Well, that's like benefits. This district allows for general commercial and industrial uses, a more defined industrial zone that allows for selected industrial uses. And their economic development committee gets involved in all of that, and that's, which is probably why it's scattered throughout the ordinance, because the economic development committee does almost all of the work. And I don't think Saco actually had
I didn't see that question.
A definitive concept of what the industrial park I mean, they got a whole set of what you can't do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got what, a whole bunch of bullets on what's allowed and
Yeah.
But you know what, the way, the way I see it, they're, they're all describing what, what we have already described. They, they're calling it, all three of them, industrial or business districts. We do have downtown business district. They're not calling it a business or industrial park.
Well, no, because in, in Saco, in Benefit and Saco, they are all specifically industrial business zones.
But, but we already, we have
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, they just call it something different. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't think an industrial park in the DB1 would be a, a good idea.
Industrial park, no, no, no.
Limit anybody's imagination if they can come up with a good idea, but
Well.
I cannot.
No.
So according to our zoning descriptions, we've got the business slash office park slash industrial district B1.
Yeah.
And list the maps on where it's located.
Then, then maybe we could just add as a conditional use on industrial parks and, and put a description of what it is. So if somebody's looking at it, they'll at least understand that it, we're not saying you can't have it.
Yeah.
It's allowed, it's allowed in this particular area. And I, I think BI would probably be an appropriate spot, one of the few in which we'd actually be able to find enough land to be able to do anything comparable with. Because you've got most of the northern side, most of the northern part of Route 1 from the cottages all the way up on both sides of the road.
Curiosity, who owns most of the land where the ledge is in the best, business district?
I don't know.
I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just, I don't know.
I'm, I'm, why I'm saying this, because you don't want to sell just a section of the front so you have no access to the back. If somebody else wanted to, to continue to grow because you got from Route 1 all the way to Mountain Road.
Yep. But that would, that would be contingent upon the owner, are they willing to sell it? And, and if you're willing, if you want to have something that butts out up against the Mountain Road, you have to understand if it's a business, it's coming out on Route 1, it's not coming out on the Mountain.
Right, right, I understand that, but
I think that would be one of the bigger problems that we'd come across.
Yeah.
Because Mountain Road wouldn't withstand the the weight.
Oh, yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to support that.
That's tough.
No, you find something, Paul?
Well, I'm just, I'm reading the description of what they've got for the BI District, and it pretty much lays it out, it's on Portland on Route 1. Shall include all property within the BI District boundaries illustrated on the official land use map. In general, BI District lies along Portland Road bounded by a line beginning at a point 1,000 feet east of the easterly right-of-way line, Portland Road, Route 1, and is bounded to the west by Granite State Gas Transmission Corridor and Eastern Trail, Lot 9, on a frontal assessive map.
Yeah, that pretty much defines where, where you could have it. Right? And I'm sure that there are large parcels of land in that area that would be available. So let, let's do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they've already described it for us, we probably just don't have a section like this that says what you can and can't do in that section.
There was, there was one. I think it was Saco. They had, do you remember Tad's great chart of the various zones? That what was permitted or conditional or not allowed?
Who was that?
Tad. You don't remember that? He, he went through, he had a whole list of stuff. Automobile, not allowed, not allowed, not allowed, conditional use. Just little, a little graph.
He was making that work for himself.
Yeah, it, it looked like an Excel spreadsheet as to what you could do or couldn't do in, in most of the particular zones. We never adopted it. But
No, I came post Tad. I was after
Oh, you were post Tad, okay.
He's the cause of me coming, but
So he got to you before you could get away?
Yeah. I learned a lot.
Okay, so then let's, let's is everybody in agreement that the BI District would be the appropriate place?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Then let's, let's work on developing a description of the purpose of an industrial zone. And then we'll we can add, it's already in the BI District. So when we, when we do the descriptive of an industrial, the industrial park, we'll make it quite clear, it's only allowed in the BI District.
But don't we already have it with the BI says it, it's called business office park slash industrial district?
Right. Yeah, that's what it is, right?
Yeah, but we want to, we want to put something in there that makes it that, so that when people look at it, they know this is the only place that it's allowed. You're not going to be allowed to go out into the ARD District. You're not gonna be allowed to go out into the A R D district.
So are you proposing we? Change the words in. Section thirteen point six, or we actually go ahead and put something down like this?
What is thirteen point six say?
That's the one we just read.
That's the definition?
That's the definition of the business slash office park slash industrial. Right. That's the stuff I, I had just read to you.
That's not. Much different than what Kenny Buck does.
No, right, this, this just tells you where it is. Well, I guess the other, the other option would be in the various. Uh districts. Uh industri- industrial parks are not allowed. Just, just some way to, so that if you're an applicant and you're looking at doing something. You realize that the only place that you, you're going to be allowed to do that is in this particular zone.
But it. It depends on what you call industrial park.
Right, because we don't have.
Right beside Bentley's, there is, there is. An industrial development, hasn't, hasn't. Hasn't sold much. But they.
No, he's kept it all.
He kept it all, that was, was.
Yeah, it's just now. It's just now posted. Months for sale.
Oh, I didn't, I've been wondering what's going on.
No, he's just posted it.
Cause it.
Because since the guy went in the back for the uh, where the uh. Way in the back there where he. Ran that building.
Yeah.
I mean, uh.
They had like, what, eight? Uh subdivisions and.
Yeah.
And not, only one of them was actually built on.
Yeah.
And I, I, I didn't want, always wondered why, so maybe.
Well, we, but that's also where the marina wanted to go.
Yeah.
Back there.
But we, but Bentley's is the DB one zone.
It's DB one, but.
So you wouldn't put the.
But there, what I'm saying, there already is. A, a, a small-scale industrial park that, that hasn't done much, but they could, and it's. It, I don't think it. It's out of place there. Our impact in Bentley's is. If, if they had, had. But just like um the one we're talking about going up the hill, uh.
Yeah, you got Bentley's, we got. But you also got Champion right there.
Yeah, across the street and. So it, but it depends on what I'm saying, you, you don't wanna have uh. Thousand employee uh warehoused there or manufactured.
No, because it's, it's specifically designed for small scale.
So, but, but, for small. I think we have to be careful what, what we're restricting. To not allow industrial park means something like. That, that development would not be allowed. Which I think is pretty low-key.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that it would be allowed now in the DB one zone.
I think it would be. Well, we have, what was just uh approved a, a month ago. Or maybe two months ago, that they just started clearing. Right next to uh. Just. Kind of near uh. Holy Donut.
Right, yeah, the, the shed place.
Yeah, they just cleared the whole lot out, maul the trees.
Yeah, it's, it's, they're, they're putting in, they're, they're, I think they're, they're keeping ownership of it. But in the sense, it ends up being like a small-scale. Low-key industrial park.
No, because they're not manufacturing anything, they're just, they're bringing in sheds to set up and, and sell.
Not that. The one that has uh. Like.
Next to Bran, right next to Branch Brook.
Yeah, next to Branch Brook, three buildings. With uh multiple uses in each one.
There's a house on one side upstairs.
Stores on the first floor, apartments on the second floor.
Yeah, oh yes, yeah, I didn't know that.
And would that be considered industrial park? I think it could be. So I'm just saying, whenever we come up with a definition, we don't wanna ban something like that.
Yeah.
That, that, which is probably what we want, a small-scale. If they employ, they'll employ people there.
Yeah, but originally, originally they said they weren't gonna clear cut everything. They've clear cut everything. That whole section. Because that runs almost. To the backside of a, a Hemlock campground.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I don't think of that as an industrial. Park per se, because they have. They, they, they met the requirement of having residential.
Right.
On the second floor. You would not have residential in an industrial park, but.
Security.
They, they didn't need to have a residential there, it could have just been.
It could have been, but. I'm not sure what it is that they do.
I'm not sure, I, I don't.
Right.
It's like four or five. Yeah, open areas that have the doors for trucks to be.
Yeah, I don't think he had any specific unit.
No.
They're, they're almost a contractor yard.
Yeah, contractor. You know. You, you might. You may wanna get a hold of.
It's in DB one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thought you guys just told me we couldn't do residential in DB one.
It has to be incidental to the property.
Okay. Don't confuse me.
So yeah, see, you can't, in, in the DB one, you cannot have a residence on.
Build a single family home. Okay. Bye.
You may wanna get a hold of Donna and see if. John had any. Of his old notes. When he walked that whole industrial area. Because he was looking at the idea of possibly. Putting a vegetable growing thing in there too at one time.
He talked about doing aquaculture.
Yeah.
Out there at one point.
But I mean. Just to see if. For. Information, because he never really divulged it to us. What he thought could be built, because. He was a teacher and he went into different ideas and. He had a lot of good, good thoughts, but. It's, I just uh brainstorm, you may wanna. Go along the idea.
I don't want, I don't think I wanna try to read John's notes. You're troubled, Paul.
I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to answer.
I think more than anything. It, it's a description and. We, it's, it's already. Based on just the description of the B I zone, it is allowed. I think at this point, it's simply a matter of. Putting it in there.
And you wanna explicitly say that you can do that. To explicitly say that.
Yes, to explicitly, thank you, to explicitly state that. Industrial park isn't allowed use in that zone, or. Conditionally permitted use.
Permitted use.
Now, it has to be conditional. Cause you don't want somebody to decide they wanna put in a dynamite factory. Speaking of.
Well, and, and one way to get rid of the ledge.
Yeah, that's true. They can manufacture Tannerite for us. Did you, did you guys see the news tonight? Some truck that was driving down in the Dallas area tipped over. An, an eighteen-wheeler. Going around the curve, nobody touched him, he tipped over, he was full of ammunition. Fortunately, nothing went off. Well. There was traffic all over the place, it would have been ugly.
Who, who's lucky to get home yet?
So I'm looking at the permitted uses in the B I. And I'm seeing automobile service stations, commercial contractor yards. Uh manufacturing, medical facilities, blah, 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 so personal offices, all those things. Kind of end up being. What goes into an industrial park.
I mean, you can also just add parts of that, this.
Just add, I guess we could. Do you have a definition?
Tagging.
Yeah, just one small definition. Without, I, I, I would caution about doing too much.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I'd rather, if we wanna emphasize it. You throw it in there. Otherwise, you're gonna end up restricting it somehow down the road, adding too much language.
Yeah.
Which is why some of these definitions are so vague. They don't want to send it to consequences.
Yeah, yeah, I think just. Keep it really simple, adding that definition would be great. So how do we get that?
Okay.
So, I'll tell you what, fellas. Now that. You got me somewhat directed. Let me take. I'll read through this stuff again that you gave us. I got what I think you're looking for between the definition on page seventy-nine and the. Back in thirteen point six, let me draft something and I'll send it out to you guys to take a look at.
Okay.
And we can. Stop on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, how about that conservation? Area where, which. It could possibly be used for railroad.
I, you know what, I, I, I think it would be a tough sell.
I mean, just, it's a possibility.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it makes sense even going there.
I don't, I don't think we'd be able to persuade the railroad to move.
No, you aren't gonna have the railroad to move. But you would come in up, the Proctor Road right there. Where uh. And or uh. The school is. The road to go down on that side. Of the railroad tracks. She getting, to put a road down in there.
Start a hell of a lot of money to upgrade those roads so they don't ever get posted.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I like the idea better of putting the description in there, saying it's allowed in the B I. And if somebody comes along who wants to spend the money to do that work. Let, it's their money.
Have them apply for a zone change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
That's fine.
Any, any comments or suggestions, Sam? Other, other than laughing at us.
I mean. I, I don't have anything else, I think it's just um. It's, it's not a zoning district, it's a, a use. And these, these ordinances are referring as districts, not uses. So I mean, you need like a definition, purpose, performance standards.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments by the board on? Any of this? If not, we'll turn it over to Sam and let her discuss two thousand and three with us.
Okay. Um, so I, I don't know how familiar people are with this statute, I can give a brief. Overview, um. It's basically, the goal of this is really to increase housing supply and affordable housing. So there's three relevant sections, there's the affordable housing density bonus. There's a, a number of dwellings per lot, and then there's um accessory dwelling units. So. Um, we've helped a lot of towns uh update their ordinances to comply with the state um last year. And I think the reason why this is coming up now is, is because Ryan is dealing with some people who um are looking to build ADUs. And maybe looking to do additional, uh, an additional home on their lot. And right now, there are some restrictions in the ordinance that prevent people from, from doing that. So that's like the overview, you can see um in the handout from the state. Which shows how many lots you can build on, how many homes you can build on a lot. And so basically, the, uh, a rental doesn't have public utilities. So for the section that says you can do up to four units, that would not apply. Even though the comp plan does have growth areas, the growth areas don't have public sewer or water. So right now, you can allow, you need to allow up to two dwellings on a lot. This can be two single-family homes, it could be a single-family and an A D U. Um, but that's kind of um. Uh, the basic way the town can comply for right now. Um, in the event that there is some type of like advanced wastewater treatment in the future within those growth areas. You would need to allow for four, you could allow for up to four units if there's no dwellings on that lot. But for right now, it's. It's two. Um, up to two.
Was, is there still a restriction on size, Sam?
For the A D, for the accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Um, so the state says it, it's minimum is a hundred and ninety square feet. They don't give a maximum.
I thought eight hundred, it was eight hundred something.
It, it used to be, I thought, eight hundred or fifty percent of the original, well.
That's the maximum size.
Right, now she's saying there's no max.
Well, the town had its own. Maximum, I wonder if the state. Does, does the state.
You can have a maximum size. Um, and that would comply. Um, the state uh says. You're like, you gotta be at least a hundred and ninety square feet. Um, cause that's what they qualify as, like livable space. Yep.
Accessory.
Basically, that's a studio apartment.
Right.
Yep.
And it's also provided your septic system is designed and committed, right?
Yeah.
So we still have that restriction.
Yeah, that's, that's a big one, and we're gonna have to look at. Uh, but we're not gonna have to, this is gonna become an issue for Ryan, the code enforcement officer. Um. Because he's gonna have to look at the septic. And, and whether or not the land will support. Multiple septics, and whether or not the groundwater table will support. Extra houses, because remember, we had, we had a subdivision. We had a subdivision down, we had a subdivision down at the end of Limerick Road. That was told, you can't go in there because you're draining the, the uh. The, the water level. Uh, in the aquifer underneath, and if you wanna put anything in, spend a million dollars and hook into the pipeline, because you're not gonna be able to. To provide water to anybody. And I'm, I was surprised to hear that they had considered it and then changed their mind.
Well, these won't even come to the planning, they're just gonna go like a code enforcement officer for permit, right, building permit?
That's, that's right, but there's a, an order, a larger ordinance change that would get approved by the planning board.
Right, we're gonna have to make the changes to the ordinance, but.
Yes.
We will not be reviewing any of the projects.
Yeah, yeah. If we change it, but we don't deal with them.
What's that?
They said, we change it, but we don't deal with them.
Right, see, that's what I'm saying, if, if I'm gonna put another ADU, I'm, I'm just going to the. Code enforcement officer, putting in a building permit and.
Yeah.
And then I gotta prove to him my septic system and stuff, it won't be something that'll become a hassle every time somebody wants to put an A D U in.
Yeah, the only, the only time.
He had that with the plant. Remember, where his. Mothers or something like that.
Cause he, but, but that was on the other side of a road, and he, he wanted to be able to connect it up, and we weren't allowing it. Because he, he was supposed to connect onto, onto the principal residence for the eight. But we've changed that modification now. The big thing that I am, that, that would worry me about that. Is, what's the size unit? You know, it, how, how big are you going to be able to put on? And. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, but it's my understanding right now that if it is a vacant lot. You can put four houses on it.
Yeah.
But if it's an individual already owned. Then you can only put one.
Yeah.
But each house can have an A D U. Do I, do I understand that correctly?
You can only do up to four units if you're in a growth area with public sewer and water.
Oh, okay.
So that would not apply. Yeah.
Cause we don't have town water, so.
And that's.
On an empty lot.
Providing septic systems.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So if you're gonna put a five thousand square foot A D U, you don't really have a big septic system.
Yeah.
I think the size is limited to eight hundred square feet right now.
It is right now, yeah.
It's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you wouldn't really be able to build like your A D U bigger than your primary dwelling. Is, is the idea.
Are these just updated to comply with state regulations?
I think we restricted A D Us to twenty-five percent of the square foot. Of the, of the dwelling that's already on. I, I think we restricted ADUs to twenty-five percent of the square foot of the, of the dwelling that's already on.
Do you know where that would be? I was looking.
I don't know, I don't, my ordinance is being held hostage at Honda. Well, it took them until five o'clock tonight to call me and tell me my car was ready.
Yeah, so if you look at page one forty of the ordinance, that's where the section on accessory dwelling units is.
Thanks. I know we had words, but I couldn't remember what the word, no.
So you, yeah, it's fifty percent of the, the area of the, um, single family dwelling unit.
Yeah, well, I question Sam, do you know if this is still legal to restrict it to eight hundred feet? That seems pretty restrictive. I'm, I'm all right with it, but.
Yeah, you can.
But what's the state say?
You're allowed to, to cap the size as long as it's larger than a hundred and ninety square feet. So this is compliant, yeah.
So, so we're covered.
Yeah, the biggest thing with the accessory dwelling is like, you need, uh, the, the space to do septic, and also you can't allow more parking. That is allowed for the principal.
What, what?
Additional parking.
All right, so we're okay, we don't have to go change our.
Not that, but we gotta change the rest of this. But I also see that the owners of the property must reside in one of the dwelling units. Would that still be valid?
Does that still apply?
What if you had, wanted to have two rentals, would, would you do that?
B and B?
Well, I guess. You have to live there.
Yeah, someone would need to occupy that residence, yeah.
Okay.
When I built it, I lived there ever since then, I knew who was talking about.
Well, are you, are you illegal at that point? Also, how, how do you?
Wait, 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 if, if he's illegal, can we call ICE?
How, how do we know if, if, if the owner is, is there or not?
We don't, we, we take their word for it.
Yeah.
Well, that's my point, I could be there now, then I, I
Yeah.
Decide I'm moving to Florida and renting it out, pay for my Florida home. How are you gonna know?
Well, now we do.
Well, I think, I think the issue is not, not so much how are you gonna know? You were living there when it was built.
Exactly.
Case closed.
Right.
What is the status on B and Bs here in town?
Short term.
Or Airbnb?
I, Airbnb, I don't think we have anything on the books.
I don't think so.
Not B and B, not a bed.
Air, Airbnb. The term now is short term rentals.
We, we talked, remember a while back, we talked about Airbnb, specifically related to the section down, uh, at the end of Log Cabin Road where Senate Road comes in and where Winks used to be.
Yeah, right.
We talked about that entire area, uh, because evidently somebody was running, uh, an Airbnb in the area, and we, we decided to leave it alone.
Yeah.
So I, I don't wanna tell somebody they can't rent a, a spare room in their house on an overnight basis.
Really an issue.
Oh, you're way off track. Is there anything else we need to do, Sam?
We're gonna, we're gonna have another change coming, isn't it? Is somebody, is it eighteen forty-nine or nineteen forty-eight or something?
There's a new change to the subdivision law that's, that's coming through, um, which I haven't really looked at closely. Um, but, um, yeah, so for this, um, it could be on for the next year's town meeting, um.
Put it further back.
Yeah. Um, I think like the biggest change to note is like currently the ordinance says you can only do two, uh, dwellings on a lot if you split the lot. So you have to split the lot first, so you wouldn't be able to do like two single family homes on one lot or a single family accessory dwelling on one lot. So that's like the biggest thing that would need to change, but other than that, it's a lot of like smaller, like some wording changes, new definitions, um. Um, yeah, just basic, things like that, yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to change anything now, right now on this?
No, I'm, I've been working on some changes, um, but yeah, I just wanted to get the boards take before any like decisions get, get made.
Do we know, uh, how many are being built in town, I mean, ADUs?
I'm not sure.
Do, do you know, Rich, how, how many have there been?
I have no idea.
Well, was that Tom, I couldn't hear you.
How many are there? How many, how many people have added on an ADU?
I think we could, we could find out easily enough. Or not so much code enforcement, Beth is back, she's back to work, so she would probably, as the assessor, she would know.
Just curious.
But I don't, I don't have a clue. Nobody asks us, which is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am, I know that, I'm sure.
That's everything.
We, uh, boss, you good? I got one question for you from the last meeting. We ended up tabling. We tabled both this discussion and the ordinance for space and bulk requirements in the R three district, screening and buffering, as well as stockade fencing R three, in the R three and R four. And I think it was because they were asking and I believe that Susan's wanted to ask, she wanted to change the side yard setback and rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to fifty feet.
Yeah, but no one knew why. No one knew why.
No, I asked her why.
And she's, not you.
Okay, so I'm just saying that's still out there that we tabled it and never got back to it, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it on the table.
We'll have to take a look at that sometime. I, I asked why too. If I want it.
Well, after, after she gets back, I'll tell her to, to mention it to Anne, so she can get it put back on the agenda, so that we can have that discussion.
Yep.
All right.
Other than that, is that it?
Thank the most, India, John.
Hey.
We are done.
Still light out.